Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, February 18th. We haven't had a meeting in, it seems like, since last summer. There's another snowstorm coming, and tonight I made the decision before I drove over here is I'm not snow plowing. I'm gonna let Mother Nature do it. So hopefully you all will remain safe, and I hear warm weather is coming, but not for long. Tonight's agenda, we have some minutes to approve. We will have a reserve fund transfer concerning the Water Company, which the Water Acquisition Study Committee. We did just concluded an executive session where we discussed strategy concerning labor negotiations with the Fire Chief and the Department of Public Works, and a real estate negotiation. Both of these, all of these items, the discussion in public would have had a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. Posted on the agenda was an item for the Sawmill Pond property and its potential management transfer to the Conservation Commission. We have elected to put a hold on that pending some further research. We will then go into some warrant articles from, that were scheduled originally for tonight, a series of those concerning use of conservation land, fire engines, additional fire engines, South Shore Country Club, discussion on the 43D District, an easement next to G.A.R. Hall, and a proposed discussion and funding for Foss Memorial Design and Construction. Most importantly, we will have a discussion of the flood maps, which is a reminder to the audience, is a discussion that the town has had, both with the federal government and with the support of state officials concerning the recent changes in flood maps that have affected over 500 homes in Hingham. And some work has been done, and they're gonna get a report back on that. And then, to keep our brains awake, we'll do some more warrant articles, dealing with the Hannah Lincoln Writing Fund, committee reports, the Personnel Board, salaries of town officers, easements, and a bill from a previous year, and a dispersment of light plant receipts. So with that as the agenda, I just would like to make an announcement that our Veterans Agent, Keith German, has been called again by the government to, for active service, commencing June 30th. It's a 13-month assignment, as I understand it. He is gonna build, he's a Seabee, as some of you may know, and he will be assigned to the area of Somalia. So Keith, yet again, a good sailor, good people get to go good, do more good deeds. So we wish him well. That creates an issue for us, obviously, in terms of how we deal with veteran services during his absence, and we have a number of plans underway to deal with that. But I thought you'd all would be interested in Keith's future assignment. So with that, the first item on the agenda concerns a reserve fund transfer. And tonight, we have a reserve fund transfer that is related to the work that has gone on with the potential acquisition of the Water Company. As we have previously told you, the court set an expedited schedule in the town's lawsuit to determine a purchase price for the Water Company. Under that expedited schedule, we need to have our experts issue their report by April 15, which means we need to have them work with our special counsel to get their financial analysis done and reports written. We need to make a reserve fund transfer of $150,000 to cover the cost of this work and the expedited discovery that is now currently being done and is now underway. Although they are not due until April 15th, we believe that we will be able to genuinely share the results of what the experts are telling us at the town forum, which is scheduled for Sunday, March 2nd. And we will devote a large portion of that forum to that, to that discussion. So with that, I'd like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to transfer from the reserve fund to the Water Company acquisition feasibility study the sum of $150,000.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want to do the minutes?
Yeah, let's do the minutes, thanks, Irma. Yeah. Any, a motion on the minutes for January 9th and 23rd? Paul?
Sure. I move that we approve the minutes of January 9th and January 23rd, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We have a series of warrant articles that we, that we do every year at this time, and given all the cancellation of meetings and such, there are 47 warrant articles. I do not intend to go through all 47 tonight. By popular acclaim, we will not do that. However, just to, we do have a number, we've gotta get started. Under our process, for those of you who are not familiar with it, the Board of Selectmen receives recommendations from the public or its various committees on warrant articles, and then we proceed to vote on those, and our vote just sends them to the Advisory Committee, which in turn hears them, revises, amends, or does as they are willing to do in preparation for town meeting. All of our material must be prepared by March 20th, so we're on somewhat of a schedule, and given the date that it is tonight, we have a month to do a lot of work. The first article is to amend the general bylaw on the use of conservation land. Mr. Town Administrator?
Well, I see that we have our Conservation Officer here, and I'd ask her to explain it to us if you could. Take the board through it.
Timing is everything.
Thank you, Abby. He owes you.
How did you know it?
I'm the Conservation Officer for the town. Essentially, there are lands within the town of Hingham that historically, since about 2006, the Conservation Commission has opened up for hunting. During the course of some application processes this year, it came to staff's attention that there were two sections of the bylaw that actually prohibit hunting on public land in the town of Hingham, as well as specifically on conservation lands. So essentially, the commission, at that point, decided not to continue processing permits, to essentially say at the end of the deer hunting season this fall, hunting would be over until such time as the bylaws could either be amended, or if the town chooses not to proceed with that, then they would stop hunting altogether. So the two, there's two sections. One deals, again, specifically with the conservation land, the other deals with basically projectiles on town property, and I think you have that in your, your packets. The Conservation Commission does support hunting on the larger parcels of conservation lands, so they have issued their confidence and support in the warrant article that's before you. But essentially, they, they wanted the hunting community to take, to take that up. So Mr. Gall and Officer Horton have, have taken, taken that piece up and have put together the warrant article, and the commission is in support of it. So, uh, there's any, any participative questions?
Can I bring those guys up?
All right. Any questions?
We have two guys in the audience here that you just referred to. Bring them up.
Sure.
Dave?
Aye.
You wanna come on up?
You're on. Come on up, candid camera. Introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
My name is David Horton. I'm a resident of Hingham. I live at 95 Gardner Street in Hingham. And as you, many of you know, I also am on your police department. I'm the day shift sergeant.
My name is Frank Gall, 248 Central Street in Hingham, born and raised in Hingham. I have a wife and two children here, right around the corner.
Good. Okay, thank you both. Yep. Okay, any comments on the?
Well, as, as mentioned, we've had a cooperative relationship with the Conservation Commission for, for eight years now, and it's been a successful program where deer hunting has been allowed on the conservation land. From the perspective of the hunters, it's obviously been a good thing. From a perspective of what I can see in the police department, and I'm here speaking, you know, for myself, I'm not here working for the police department, but I can say that we've had really very little problems, if any. Hunting is a very safe activity. I have some statistics, I could probably make copies. I unfortunately was just away on vacation, and I haven't made copies, but I have statistics comparing hunting accidents to other outdoor recreational activities, and really, there is, there is extremely low incidence of, of injuries to people from hunting, and usually it would be hunters themselves injured, and the number is extremely, extremely, like .001 percent for non-hunting participants. So, and I know that's often one, one concern is its safety, and from our perspective, it is in fact safe. And of course, you know, there's many reasons to allow hunting. Clearly, overpopulation of the animal species in, in the town has negative effects on them and the people around. One of the main things is Lyme disease, kind of an epidemic these days. Overbrowsing their habitat causes permanent damage to the habitat and harm to the animals and other species. Hunters are a highly managed tool that is used by the, the state to control these populations, and we do this, we pay fees to do it, we're certainly willing to pay even fees to the town to cover any costs associated with, you know, setting up a permitting system, and that's what we're here before you to ask for your support on. Frank?
Yeah, I've been participating in the program for four years. I think it's been in substance for about seven, and to my knowledge, as Abby had described, the inability of the town to permit hunting on conservation land was recently discovered as a result of a feasibility study for a coastal bird, sort of population control. I don't know of anyone who's ever had an issue with a resident as far as the hunting program is concerned. I think it's been relatively discreet, so I'd ask the board to, to allow us to continue to do that.
I'd actually like to add one other thing, just a clarification. This whole amendment is, deals strictly with bow hunting only. It does not deal with firearms use on, on towns' land. I mean, I know that, we're talking about bow hunting, all the language has bow hunting, and it would not open up discharge of firearms or anything like that. I mean, obviously, there's the noise, noise problem, that's one of the biggest problems we've had with complaints about hunters, the waterfowl thing, has to do with the, the noise, even, even more than probably the safety, and that's what this is about.
Okay, very good. Mr. Haley, any questions?
No, I, I talked with David about this some weeks ago, and, you know, I can certainly see the need to keep the animal population at appropriate levels. You know, just in the past six months, deer are jumping across Main Street down by Petrie Hill, and, you know, I just wouldn't wanna hit, hit a deer if I could avoid it. So I think it's a good idea to allow this hunting to continue.
Okay.
I, I agree with Dave, to allow it to continue, and the hunting that's been done has not hurt the deer population one iota. They're alive and well and very healthy.
Very good.
Doesn't say much for us hunters, does it?
You're not missing, are you?
Just need more hunters out there.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Practice up, fellas.
I know.
I can, I can tell you, they love euanamus. They, they love euanamus. It's a plant I used to have on my property. Okay. If that's being said, any comments from the public? There being none, I make a motion that we pass on the amend, the motion to amend the general bylaw on the use of conservation land. Second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
All right. Q. Gotta be.
Article Q, Duffster.
Mr. Alexiades, I see our Fire Chief is here, and the next item on the agenda is fire engines.
So the Fire Chief can give you some specifics about it, but what I can tell you is, is that the, the Asset Committee that we, the community formed to look at this, came back with a recommendation for two engines. It's consistent with the capital outlay committee's report from last year, and where those engines stack, and this is an authorization to borrow for those two engines, for a total of $1.2 million. That includes the cost of the engine and the cost of equipping, and it's a generous amount for the equipping, which of course, if we don't spend, we won't use, utilize all of it.
Mr. Chief? It's Fire Chief Duff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Duff, 37 Bradley Park Drive. As stated, the Asset Committee, the Fire Department Asset Committee, which has several charges, including the purchase of apparatus, discussed this in several meetings. Other options were looked at, but it was felt that the two engines were appropriate. We're actually a year behind in our capital outlay program. Normally, this is done straight through capital outlay, and voted as a capital outlay expense, but last year, due to circumstances involving balancing the budget, I was asked if we could defray this for a year, which we readily agreed to, and that's why we're purchasing two. The vehicles are 21 and 23 years old. It's gonna be anywhere from 12 to 18 months to, to get new equipment built, people trained and online, so now we'll be talking about replacing vehicles that are almost 25 years old. Those vehicles, those particular vehicles that we're talking about, due to the storms we've had this winter, with ongoing training that's happened yesterday, today, and tomorrow, being pressed into service almost on a daily basis, and, and that's not good running a 23, 24-year-old fire engine around the community, and I don't think I have to really go into a lot on that. I think people understand that, not many people run a 25-year-old car, and, and we shouldn't be doing it in the Fire Department. Instead, as pointed out also, it involves replacement of the equipment on the vehicles, which can be anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000 per vehicle. We run second-generation equipment, so every other time a vehicle is replaced, the equipment that's carried on it gets replaced with it, but we're in that second generation now. So that's why the, the number is as high as it is, and in some cases, there's even a few pieces of equipment, including some of the hose that's almost third generation. There is an advantage to buying two fire engines at the same time, because they will be exactly the same, so when we train our crews, the engines, the vehicles, by the way, will be going to the Southfire Station, the Torrance Station, and the Constitution Station, and they will be exactly the same, so the training issues are the same, the equipment will be in the same spots. This is really nice, 'cause we just, as you all aware, purchased two ambulances, and they were exactly the same. So I'm not saying, suggested in our overall capital program that we, we do it this way, but it's just working out well for us, and there may be advantage, actually, of buying two units versus one. There may be a cost savings in buying two units in one year versus two separate units in separate years, so.
Thank you. Any questions, Irma?
Uh, just one for the chief. Chief, Bill Johnson put together a 25-year schedule of equipment, and I pulled that out a couple days ago when I saw this. Does this put us back on track?
Yes, it will, and with regards to the engines, like I said, we're a year behind on one of them. It will put us back on, it should put us back on track, correct. One, one thing that the Fire Department has done, and I'm glad you brought that up, Irma, is we have presented a, in some cases, a 30, and in some cases, a 40-year replacement program for every piece of equipment that the Fire Department owns that's over $5,000. We did that so that the next generation of management that comes in will actually have a piece of paper and say, "Well, I need to think about replacing a compressor," or "I need to think about replacing the hot water heater at Station 3, 'cause it's 25 years old." It's amazing how much equipment, fire service being so specialized, and all the different things we do, that, that how much equipment we have that's over, costs over $5,000. But we have a 30-year replacement program for apparatus, we have a 30-year replacement program for equipment, and that includes equipment in the stations, hot water heaters, you name it, and we have a 30-year replacement program for vehicles. What did I miss, Bobby? Uh, no, actually, stations, the station maintenance, roofs, windows, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
No, I don't, I don't think you have anything for the chief.
Okay. Okay, any comments from the public? There being none, uh, let's see.
You want me to do it?
Yeah, do Article Q, if you would.
Make a motion to recommend that the town borrow the sum of $1.2 million.
One point.
She corrected.
Is it 1.2?
For the purchase of two new ISO Class A pumper fire engines and equipment.
Red, correct?
Red, yes. Red fire engines.
Red. What are you, is there a choice? Actually, I've seen some yellow ones. Yeah, sorry, red.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And if I could have 30 seconds of your time, Mr. Chairman, there's been several CO incidents involved around the state with the high volumes of snow we've been having. Please, I'd just like to recommend to the town residents, make sure you have CO alarms in your home.
CO is?
Carbon dioxide. Make sure you have carbon, working carbon dioxide alarms in your home, working smoke detectors, make sure the vents, if you have side vents on your, particularly gas heaters, make, make sure there's clear of the snow. I heard a very sad news report tonight, just before I came up here, three fatalities in Plastonia, Hampshire, as a result of carbon dioxide poisoning in a home that had a carbon dioxide detector in it, and the battery had been removed. So please, please, make sure you do, and if you need any help with the detection, call us, we'll help you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. That's good, good counsel.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. And South Shore Country Club?
Uh, oh, thank you for this.
Yep. South Shore Country Club.
I'm sorry. You don't have a public hearing, never mind.
No, no, we don't, no. Ron. Still, I'm still chair, dead man walking, but I'm still chair.
Mr. Grail, how are you?
All right. Go ahead. Introduce yourself if you'd be so.
Jay McGrail, Director of Operations of South Shore Country Club. Jay's here to talk today about warrant article for mowers and triplexes ordinarily. This was run through capital planning. In the past, what we've used is a lease, and unfortunately, I cannot acquire leases for the country club at the rates that we used to be able to acquire them for compared to what we can borrow. And since we have borrowings on the table for other projects, it would be much cheaper for them to tag onto that, and that's why we have the warrant article. Why don't you tell the board a little bit about the substance? So what we're looking to do is, we, we purchased, when I first started working at the country club about seven years ago, we purchased pretty much all the equipment that we have, all the golf, mowing equipment that we have. And the plan was, once we paid off the five-year loan, to start rolling some of it out and doing that out of operating. After a few years of trying to do that and realizing every year that it falls to the bottom of the list, we haven't replaced any of that equipment yet. So two years after we finished the borrowing, paying off the borrowing, we, we put together a list of some key essential equipment that we consider, you know, integral, that is costing more money now to maintain than it would to, to purchase new and make payments on. And those pieces of equipment are basically our greens mowers, our three triplex greens mowers, and our two fairway mowers. They're unique in that they're not rotary mowers, they don't cut grass like your front lawn mower cuts. It cuts on a reel and bed knife principle, and it takes a lot of work to maintain that sharp edge and maintain those mowers. So our costs of maintaining this equipment right now is, has risen quite a bit, and to keep those mowers for the next few years, we were looking at having to replace, completely replace all of the reels and bed knives at more of an expense than what our payments would be to do this. So we spoke with Ted about still moving forward with our plan to be able to replace specific items through operating, through our cap, our five-year capital plan, but look at this, these mowers as something that for pretty much, you know, going forward, will always have to carry a budget number for, you know, borrowing. It just seems to me like, it seems to us like it makes the most sense to, to point out these key pieces and just understand that it's something that we're always gonna have to maintain, and it's cheaper to do it this way than it is to try to maintain old equipment. So we were looking for 191, $417,000 for these five pieces of equipment, and amazingly enough, two of the pieces of equipment, the fairway mowers that we're looking to purchase, that we're actually getting a better deal now, seven years later than we paid then, which I don't think that happens very often, so it's a good deal. It's all on state contract, so it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, good. Paul?
No, I have nothing.
Irma?
No. Since I sat in on the discussion with the Country Club Committee, I think they've made absolutely the right decision. They looked at this thing about 19 ways to send a, and this is the best financial decision for them and for the town.
Okay.
Nice job.
Okay. Paul?
I move to recommend that the town borrow the sum of $191,417, purchase of mowers and triplexes for the South Shore Country Club.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. Next article has to do with the expansion of the 43D District. Mrs. Sullivan, I see you. Ms. Lane, nice to have you. Just for the folks at home, so they can see your faces on TV.
Greg Lane, 14 Rice Road, and I'm the incoming chair of the HDIC.
And Sue Sullivan, 26, Governor Andrew Rode, member of the HDIC, the Hingham Development Industrial Commission.
Okay. So you have a proposal for a warrant article?
We do.
Can you give us an abbreviated version?
Very much so. I'm just gonna pass these, your way, in case you don't have them already. Actually, I need one of those back. Essentially, two years ago, just about two years ago, the Hingham Development Industrial Commission went before town meeting after having consulted with all of the boards that were affected, the Health Commission, CONCOM, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, with a warrant article that allowed the South Shore Park, Industrial Park, to come under a state legislative designation known as Chapter 43D. Basically, 43D allowed for expedited permitting. What it basically said in a nutshell was that our boards in our town agreed that in the industrial park only, okay, that we would do all of our permitting work within 180 days from the time a development came to us with a full application, and so our boards would work concurrently, and at the end of that 180 days, we would have a determination. It didn't mean that we had to say yes, it didn't mean we had to say no, it just meant that we couldn't go on for eight months, 10 months, 12 months, et cetera. Our boards all agreed with that, the Board of Selectmen supported it, the Advisory Board supported it, and it passed unanimously at town meeting. Once that happened, we then had to apply to the state for this designation. What the warrant article did was basically allowed the town to apply to the state for the designation. Before we could do that, we had to get all the signatures of all of the owners of all of the parcels in the park, 30-some-odd of them, which we did over the last several, we, starting right after town meeting in 2012, we began doing that, and sometime in that process, over the last year and a half or so, we realized that there was an error in, in the, in the warrant article. The error is, so basically, we're coming back, this is a cleanup article only, okay? In the, in the warrant article, we stated that it was the South Shore Park, and then, when a warrant article was written, it just listed all, all of the parcels. What we realized after is there were two Scrivener's errors. One parcel had been left off, one that had, that had a building, and that was 100 Industrial Park Road. We had 99, we had 119, we had, they just kinda skipped over it. And the other one was 55 Pond Park And the other one was 55 Pond Park Road was in there, and there's no such thing as 55 Pond Park, it was supposed to be 55 Research Road. It just kind of, what happened was it was 50 Pond Park, and then it went to Research, and it just got messed up there. And then, the other, the only other issues were that the, anything that didn't have a building on it, which, by the way, was the whole idea why we wanted development and all on these parcels, didn't show up in the warrant article. Everything that had, when it was, you know, it said, it said, "We voted to accept the provisions of 43D for the South Shore Industrial Park," including, and when it listed them all, it only listed the properties that had buildings on them. So, what we're coming back and fixing in this, as we've done, and put our application into the state, but before they act on it, they said, "Go back, get these cleaned up, you know, put these in there as listed." So, basically, each of these, each of these that are on the new warrant article are included in the industrial park, the two Scrivener's errors, and then the parcels that have no buildings on them now. So, that's all that the warrant article does.
Okay. It's an extremely wordy warrant article.
Yes. Did I sum it up a little bit?
You did. You did. Any comments or questions?
Just want to welcome Greg, as his first meeting as Chair of HDIC. I trust we'll see you many more times.
I think you will.
Good. Thank you, Irma. That goes for all of us, Greg.
Thank you, Bruce.
Paul? Any questions?
Just a comment. I know Sue won't say so, but she put a lot of elbow grease into getting this done, and I just want to thank you for the work that you did here. This is the kind of spade work that makes development projects successful, and this is an area of acuity interest for the town, so thank you very much for this effort. Appreciate it.
When you add it with all the other days and months that you've put in to get us to the first step.
Appreciate it.
I would echo those sentiments. So, Irma, would you be kind enough to?
Sure. I'll make a motion to recommend the filing of an application with the inter-agency permitting board for the designation of land included in what is now commonly known as the South Shore Park, including properties located at Zero Abington Street in Perren's Map 212, Lot 13, 73 Abington Street in Perren's Map 211, Lot 001, Zero Commerce Road in Perren's Map 207, Lot 21, 130 Industrial Park Road in Perren's Map 207, Lot 20, Zero Abington Street in Perren's Map 208, Lot 9, 15 Technology Place in Perren's Map 213, Lot 15, Zero Route 3 in Perren's Map 208, Lot 67, 100 Industrial Park Road in Perren's Map 207, Lot 3, Zero Derby Street in Perren's Map 200, Lot 1, and 55 Research Road in Perren's Map 207, Lot 10, as priority development sites under Chapter 43D of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 205 of the Acts of 2006.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sue. Greg?
Can we bring one other thing in front of you, that you've got in front of you right now, just, there was a second thing after the vote, that you don't necessarily need to vote on tonight. This is for your perusal. These are the draft procedures. Once we apply to the state, and, do you have a copy, Irma?
Yep.
Yep, it's yours.
Once we apply to the state, and they presumably accept our application, we then have to, we have to name someone to be the point of contact within the town to make sure that all of the boards are working together to make this happen.
Your forty.
This is a draft that's been put together by Greg, myself, and Mary Savage, and for your perusal and your vote at a future time.
Okay, great. Good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that word. So, thanks, Greg. Mr. Administrator, in the interest of time, I know we have some people here for the flood maps, so.
Well, we have people for all the next three issues. You have someone here for the easement, you have someone here for Foss, and you have someone here for the maps. So, has your pleasure.
Well, since it's published the way it's published, I'll keep it the way it is. Trying to expedite it, but I won't be successful. Let's go through the remaining.
So, your next item is the easement. Next is JR Hall, and you have the petitioner, there's a petition article, and Mr. Scamone will come up and talk to the board.
Good evening.
I want Sharon to introduce herself, and then the topic to you, and then I have a few comments to share with you.
Okay. My name is Sharon James. I live at 360 Main Street beside Memorial Hall, and I don't have a legal way to access the backyard with my car, so I have been using the driveway at Memorial Drive, at Memorial Hall, sorry. I don't know whether you have pictures of an easement plan I had drafted. If you don't, I can pass them out. So, my request is to just be able to traverse the driveway and park behind my house. I do have it plowed, and I also have the little lot of land beside my house mode. I think my lawn mower fellow thinks it's mine. So, that is my request.
Okay.
So, I'll give you an overview. So, Sharon brought this to my attention last, after last winter, and I believe you had an issue with the parking on the main street, and she approached us as whether or not the town be interested in providing an easement, so she could cross across the back area in snow emergencies and park underneath the, in her property, but use, as you can see on the map, use our land to get there. I did check with our Veterans Agent, and through him, checked with folks who used JR Hall. They're very concerned about the usage in this area, and they were fine with the proposal. It's not meant to have her vehicle parked in any way along the accessway, just using it to move through. And the other point to consider, as Susan Murphy, our real estate counsel, has given us the draft language for the easement, you will not be voting either tonight or even at town meeting, the actual easement, but just rather the permission of town meeting to negotiate the appropriate easement. So, while we'll try to endeavor to get that negotiation done beforehand, you know, if it's not, for whatever reason, you're still free to move through that.
Okay. Well, you answered my one question, which was, as Susan looked at this, and the answer is yes. Okay. Let's see. Irma, any?
Has Mike Perina looked at it, just from a public safety perspective, or Chief Depp?
I did not ask either to look at it from that perspective.
It's very tight space there. Just as the thought asked them to look at it.
I could have them do that.
Mr. Healy?
I think it's a reasonable request under the circumstances, considering the topography of the land.
Okay. Okay. I'm okay with it. I think Irma's just saying we'll make it subject. We can do this with the.
I just want to remind you that you're not approving the easement. We still have to negotiate it. There's a few points that counsel has raised, as you know, Susan is very diligent in her points, and so there's some issues that I have not had a chance to sit down with Ms. James and go over them, and, you know, come to some agreement as to, you know, maintenance or other issues related to it. And we'll get there. It's just formality of going through that process, I haven't had a chance to.
Okay. Okay. Would you, Mr. Healy, do your article?
Yes. I move that we recommend that the town authorize but not require the Board of Selectment to grant for the benefit of that certain parcel of land described below, or rents the benefited parcel, a non-exclusive easement for the sole purpose of ingress and egress passenger vehicles over the parcel of land located at 358 Main Street, Perren's Assessor Map 90, Parcel 64, commonly known as the GAR Hall, and the location shown on a plan entitled "Easement Plan," dated December 5, 2013, prepared by Cavanaro Consultants. For such consideration and on such terms and conditions, the board deems in the best interests of the town. The benefited parcel is known as and numbered 360 Main Street, shown as Lot 63 on Assessor Map 90, and is more particularly described as Parcel 1 in a deed to Sharon L. Fryer, aka Sharon L. James, dated April 27, 2006, and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 32581, Page 122.
Second.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Sharon. The next article for discussion is the Foss Memorial Design and Construction. And I think I'll turn it over with your permission, Mr. Healy, to you, to, if this is the appropriate time.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As some of you know, the town, for a number of years now, has sought to honor Seaman Herbert Foss for his significant accomplishment in earning Medal of Honor during the Spanish-American War. Earlier last year, we had talked about perhaps renaming Town Hall, but upon reflection, it was felt that the waterfront was a more appropriate location for such an award, an honor. So, having reached that point, we took a vote in January of this year to authorize the Foss Committee and two additional members added to it, Mr. William Rind and Mr. Donald McKinnon, to participate in an effort that would come together with an appropriate memorial. And to that end, Mr. Claypool contacted Mr. Kearney, and an iteration with respect to a structure, a stone structure, I believe, was drawn up for consideration on a preliminary basis. In following up with the idea of an appropriate memorial for Mr. Foss and his memory, I called upon my own experience, when I attended the Lone Sailor Award Dinner a number of years ago. And the Lone Sailor Award is an award that's, it's awarded to a recipient who has distinguished him or herself, both in service and in community. And I had the honor of being present while Secretary John Kerry received the award, as well as Captain Thomas Hudner. Captain Hudner earned Medal of Honor at the Chosen Reservoir, and I reached out to him as part of my journey through this whole Foss experience. I solicited his views, got his input, and as a result of that, it occurred to me that there might be another opportunity here for the town to honor Seaman Foss in a way that brought a national flavor to what we want to do here. And by that, ladies and gentlemen, what I'm referring to is a statue called the Lone Sailor Statue. And this statue exists down at the Naval Memorial in Washington, DC, and there are 15 of them around the country. The original statue was cast in 1987, and it is approximately seven feet high. It's got a, I don't know if the camera can.
We're actually going to help you out on that in a couple of seconds, if you don't want to wait for a second. We went and got something for you. We're going with your story.
Okay.
Before you hit your audio visual.
Okay. And it's made of material from eight naval ships, United States naval ships. And since that time, there have been replicas built and sited around the country, primarily on the coast. And that would consist of Norfolk, Virginia, or Hampton Roads, Fort Lauderdale, Charleston, Thank you very much. I don't know if you can see that. And it's out in Long Beach. And I might point out to the audience that the shipyard at Long Beach was the only shipyard during the Second World War that exceeded the production numbers that the Hingham Shipyard put out. And it's in Bremerton, and it's in a place called Waterloo, Iowa. Now, Waterloo, Iowa, has special significance in and of itself, because that's the hometown where the five Sullivans came from. And anybody who remembers the Second World War undoubtedly remembers the tragedy that befell that family. All five of them went down on one ship together, and that's when the services changed their policy with respect to pairing brothers with each other. I'm drifting a little bit, but what I'm trying to say is that this is a great opportunity for this town to honor Seaman Foss with a symbol that unites past accomplishments with present accomplishments and future ones. This statue is presented to the wardroom of each naval ship that's commissioned since 1987. So, this travels to sea now with the United States Navy every time a new ship is launched. And the most recent ship was the USS Arlington, and that was made from steel that came from the Trade Center. So, in my mind, and I'm hoping the Foss Committee, after deliberation and consideration, adopts and incorporates this as part of what could be a very stunning and memorable monument, honor to Seaman Herbert Foss, as well as all of the Navy, Marines, Army, Coast Guard, both past and present. It seems to be perfect symmetry for what we're trying to do here. And, you know, the town will be called upon to decide whether or not it agrees with whatever we do down in the harbor. But I think that this is a great way to go about honoring Herbert Foss for what he did. So, I just hope that, you know, as we move forward with this, tonight, we're voting some money to start the design process, the permitting process. It's going to take a little while, but I think with the energy and the commitment of the committee, as well as the other involved committees in town that will vet this, we have the potential to do something really significant, to stand out on a national scale as part of what we're doing here with Seaman Foss. So, thank you. I'm hoping to get more information out as time goes on, but I see this as a great opportunity, very exciting one for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. So, as, just to recap, we have some ideas that have floated around, around what the Foss Memorial might look like. This is another idea that could be either used instead of, with, or as incorporated into that design in some fashion on the waterfront. And the article that, as Paul mentioned, we're putting an article forward tonight that would create a naming in memory of Herbert Foss for the waterfront, and put the town's commitment behind it with some money to help with the design, permitting, and construction of that memorial. Is there anyone from the Veterans Council that would like to comment, since you're in the audience? Or, that's, Mr. Beal?
I feel they can't hear you if you don't talk into the mic. Can't pick the sound up that far away.
Robert Beal, 71 Elm Street, co-chairman of the Hingham Veterans Council. Robert Beal, 71 Elm Street, co-chairman of the Hingham Veterans Council. Just to kind of fill some people in with what Herbert Foss achieved, is Herbert Foss and a half a dozen or so of his shipmates entered into a wooden boat, dragged a grapple hook through the water, very short distance from the coast, snagged a communication line that connected Cuba to Spain, which was the only communication that Cuba could have with Spain during the Spanish-American War. Their job was to cut that cable. This was in the 1890s. There wasn't a lot of power tools. He ended up actually severing the cable with a hacksaw. Most everyone on his ship, which was a rowboat, was shot, was wounded. He survived. They all received the Medal of Honor. And he came to rest in Hingham after the war and lived in this town and died in this town. So that's what Herbert Foss did. I think certainly that there's places that this statue here is fitting to this town because it has such a huge memory and association with the Navy, with the sea. And I think that whatever happens, I think this is certainly something that would be a tribute to possibly the LST people, too, that built all those ships. If you look in the buildings along the shipyard today, you'll see one building that has the shipyard in 1941, has a polo field, and the following year, you know, it has a record number of ships that were built to help supply the Allied effort. And the LST group that built those ships and served on those ships have a parcel of land that they secured, and that may be someplace, too, that it could add and contribute to the history of so many people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Irma?
Well, I certainly think the naming committee is going to have its work cut out for them, and I like Bob's idea, too, that consideration might be given for this statue at the shipyard, where so much activity was, has taken place. I think we need to support the Foss Naming Committee as they continue their journey to design and build the memorial to Foss.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. A move we recommend that the town, number one, approve the naming of the Hingham Inner Harbor, the Herbert L. Foss Memorial Park, and, two, appropriate the sum of $40,000 for use of the Foss Memorial Committee in design, permitting, and construction of a memorial to Seaman Herbert Foss.
Second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. The Foss Memorial Committee does, as Irma said, have their work cut out for them.
Do you want to recognize Keith now?
Mr. -- excuse me. Chief. Thank you, Irma.
We're not going to let him get away.
I'm not going to let you get away. I announced to the public your call to service again, and I want to give you the gratitude of the town for the service that you've rendered, and we hope you're -- we wish you a very speedy return.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. It's an honor to serve this community, the state, and the nation, as always. So, go on call.
So, fair winds and following seas.
Thank you.
That's all right. Keep your head down. Okay. Thank you, Keith. All right. Break in Warren articles to discuss the flood maps.
Yay.
So, thank you, Abby, for your patience.
Not a problem. We do have a slide presentation that we can warm up the projector for if you'd like to see it.
Please, sure. Is it ready to go, Betty?
I think so. Absolutely. So, essentially, what the project before us tonight is a review of FEMA's, or a study of FEMA's 2012 flood insurance rate maps. In 2012, Hingham adopted the flood insurance rate maps for a couple of reasons, predominantly to ensure that the town could still participate in the National Flood Insurance Program and that flood insurance would be available to town residents. That was sort of the background. The maps were approved at town meeting, excuse me, in 2012, and went into effect in July of that year. So they are the regulatory maps for the town of Hingham. They will remain in effect through this study process while FEMA takes a look at what we've done. Since 2012, when the maps went into effect, there have been some developments. The first is that flood insurance rate increases have been implemented through the federal level, through the Bigwater Act, which, for most folks in Hingham, will, would go into effect in October of this year, barring any action through Congress to delay those rates. The other piece that the town has taken a look at with these 2012 maps is, in the interim between the time of adoption and today, additional information has become available to the town relative to the methodology that FEMA used in creating those maps. So, in order to ensure that the most accurate information was available to the residents and was making sure that we properly evaluated FEMA's methodologies, the town engaged GZA Geo-Environmental and Peter Williams to do a review of those floodplain maps. There are a couple of things that have happened, sort of, in this study. So the study is essentially ready to go. There's a letter of map revision application that could be filed right away based on these studies. The results primarily, and I'll be very general about this and let Peter go into more detail, the extent of the floodplain boundaries in various particular areas along Hingham's coasts, in some cases, change from various -- there are some properties that would be potentially removed from the floodplain, some properties that would simply change flood zones. But there are pretty significant changes for folks along the coastline. There were no real significant changes, with the exception of a couple A-zone changes near the, sort of, top of town, north side of town, but predominantly, these changes are coastal. And Peter can explain that, the sort of methodologies and the reason behind that, but that is something for folks at home to be aware of. Tonight's presentation, we won't get into individual properties, but if people at home have a question about their individual properties, they can call me. Again, my name is Abby Pierceall, and I'm the Conservation Officer for the town. They can call at 781-741-1445, and we'll go ahead and set up, you know, time for folks to take a look at their individual properties. But what I'll do is turn this over to Peter. He can give you an overview, and then I believe we can talk about some next steps and where we go from here.
Okay, very good. Welcome, Peter.
Good evening. Can you have the controller? Sorry. I'll get that. Well, good evening. My name is Peter Williams. I work for GZA Geo-Environmental. I'm a coastal engineer. I've been involved in the coastal engineering and flood work for many years. I'd like to, we did do a presentation earlier to the residents, and I'm going to go through, briefly go through it right now, just to give you an overview, you know, what the important issues and what we found out. We put in it -- okay. Obviously, being on the coast, we have storms, and we have the primary causes of flooding and impacts are the storm surge, waves, and run-up. Surge is basically the, the higher-than-expected water levels than tidal elevations is due to winds and also low-pressure area. And then, when that's combined with waves, the winds acting in conjunction, you get winds and actions of the flood going inland further than what we normally see or expect. And we also have another factor, when in severe cases, waves hit the coastline, they actually can start going up banks and go up seawalls and increase the flood elevation and floodstorm damage. So the primary controlling factors are water levels, the winds, and the fetches. The fetches are the distances, like, in the harbor, where the wind can blow over the water and generate waves. An important factor in how high the waves, and which also governs the other wave setup and wave run-up that increase the flood elevation and damage. We went through a historical analysis of the Boston Wave Gauge data and came up with an elevation of 9.5, which is very close to the existing one right now. Right now, it's 9.7, and so we're pretty close. The biggest factor that we found is, in what the consultant did for FEMA, was they used an older procedure for calculating the winds. It's actually a nomograph off of the ASC manual. We went back and actually got wind data from Logan Airport, approximately 71 years of wind data, taking the maximum winds.
Excuse me, Peter, but for the folks at home and for me?
Yes.
You said a nomograph?
A nomograph is like a graph. It's, you know, it's just a chart, you know, and you go on it and you look at the region and you find your location, and it'll tell you what the wind speed should be. You have really no idea of, you know, what the data represents, what the sources were, and if it has any direction to it. So that was a, we feel one of the inconsistencies that we addressed. We looked at, these are what we call fetch fans. Here's the harbor, and those fan-shaped lines are the, how we calculate the distance over the winds, over the winds blow, which gives us the fetch distances. And in our calculation, I think, provided a better estimation of these fetch distances. So, in combination with the fetches, the winds, and the waves, and the water levels, we came up with much lower waves as we predict will occur during the 100-year storm event. We then use those as input into these calculations. ASC is a program that calculates the wave heights in the harbor, and then we do a calculation to estimate the wave setup, which is kind of a new feature that FEMA is introducing and actually causing a lot of controversy in the studies, current studies ongoing. And we estimated the wave run-up and oval in waves. One of the things we did in our study, trying to be, not to go too far off, you know, what was done before, we followed the same procedures and methodologies, basically, we used better long-term data and corrected a few inaccuracies that we found. Another thing that we found is that, one of the biggest problems is how they mapped the waves, mapped the flood zone designations. They picked certain areas, only certain transects of profiles, and we felt that there were more profiles, areas where these calculations should be performed, so you get a better representation along the whole coastline. And that's another large factor why we found a change in the flood elevations and designations within the town. We actually did a modeling. It wasn't requested by the town. We're just trying to provide backup to what we're doing. We did actually a 2D modeling of wave heights using a program called SWAN. I'm not going to go into this, too many of the details. This is your FEMA's idealized flood profile. So when you look in the flood maps, you'll see these VE17s, VE22, and that's indicating a varying flood elevation level. The base flood elevation for the town is 9.5, what we predict. And add in the effects of the wave heights and wave setup and run-up in cases, you get these higher elevations. So that was one of the critical things that we looked at to make sure that was done properly and interpolated along the coastlines correctly. Let's see. Whoops. Okay. So as I mentioned, some of the things we saw was the harbor islands, additional, you know, transects, and so we came up with new maps. And this is kind of an overview of most of the harbor and the town, but we can see that there's some significant changes in areas, and some areas didn't change at all. We found out in this area that the mapping was done correctly and actually got input from town personnel that indicated that the elevations I saw were what, you know, seems reasonable for what they've seen on other storm events. This area was reduced, the V-zone in this area, although there isn't a lot of houses in this area, it was incorrectly mapped, so we took, we corrected that. Broad Cove here, they just raised the elevations. There was no real documentation in the study analyses that we received, and so we reverted that back to the elevations that are in the original study. And with this FEMA guidance that backs us up in that, so we feel confident in that one. One of the big areas where there was change was along Otis Street here and in Walton's Cove area. This area, they had what we call one transect that ran through here that controlled this whole area. And where that transect was, is a very steep bluff, and you had waves running up that bluff coming up to elevation 22. And that, in our own respect and our calculations, we've come down to a lower elevation, I believe it's 16, but whoops. Let's see. And so, we are now down at elevation 10 in Walton's Cove, which is basically saying it's the still water flooding, there's very little wave action in there. And that's what you would expect. It's a very protected area, and these elevations have dropped down. We've also seen that this area up on the North Shore here in the Hull Bay, they had elevations of 30, which were quite extreme, and there were some inaccuracies in the profiles there, so we corrected those, too. Over here at the end of Wampatuck, they had the V-zone running all the way back to where this blue line. And what we're seeing is in a lot of areas that they weren't differentiating. They were just saying the V-zone would run all the way back, even though that the flood elevations would be very, very minor and couldn't support large waves. So, that's basically what we have. We've compiled this all, we've prepared a letter, a calculation package, and the Loma forms, there's four or five forms you have to fill out that, you know, basically, you know, tell what you're proposing, what the community identifies, the community, and kind of gives, you know, gives a presentation of the data that's submitted. And we pulled up all our calculations so that we can present this to FEMA. Typically, FEMA has 90 days to review the Loma. And in most of the cases that I've seen, when they come back asking, they may come back and say, "Well, we disagree with this, provide additional data to refute our," you know, "to further force, you know, enforce your claims." Or they may agree to what, you know, we've done. That will be, you know, further down the road. So what would happen, and we feel that there are certainly areas where there's definite errors, and they have to change the mapping, and it's just, it's indisputable. So we're going to see, I would expect, and there may be some give and take on this. And the community has to understand that these are still preliminary, and they're not going to be official until FEMA accepts our appeal, and there may be some negotiation on that. And certainly, we will, you know, fight to preserve what we have represented here. At that point, when they accept it, they will publish new flood maps.
Which we'll bring back to town meeting for acceptance.
I have to double-check that. I think it's if, you know, they, we file a Loma, and they accept it, then that's the process. I don't think it has, but it may have to be, we're revising so many, they may request that.
If the maps are changing, my understanding is we'd have to go back to town, to town meeting. Just point of reference, Abby or whoever, there was a number of homes that were affected in excess of 500, or some such number, if my memory serves me correctly. If they were to accept your analysis, Peter, what would that number be? How many? You have?
I haven't actually looked at the, you know, the houses and the numbers and everything.
So, in terms of overall homes, the 500 number came from all homes in town, which included the inland numbers as well, so that's sort of a very large number. What I did was I took the FEMA mapping information and the mapping information provided by GZA and just did some very quick estimates. There were about 90 structures that I counted that would be entirely removed from the floodplain. Between 50 and 60 of those would be occupied homes. Some of those also included sheds in that structure information, so it's a little bit inflated there. But 50 to 60 homes. There's additional pieces, for example, around Kimball Beach Road and Wampatuck Road, about 20 houses would see changes in the actual flood zones that they were in. And then we've got, you know, certainly along Otis Street and those areas that we would see some reductions in elevation as well. So what people may see is not entirely removal from the floodplain, but there would be, you know, somewhere in the order of, you know, I would say around 100 homes that would be affected in terms of what zone they may be in. And that may affect insurance rates and whether or not they're then eligible if this is passed at FEMA to go forward with letters of map amendment to take individual houses out of floodplains, even if properties are still in. So there may be some recourse for folks. So there, there may be some recourse for folks who have, who see reduced flood zones or flood elevations based on this study.
Okay. All right.
The other thing with the flood zone, if you could change from a V to an A, that certainly affects the rates, but it also affects, you know, where your first floor is, you know, determined. For V-zones, it's the lowest structural member. For an A-zone, it's the first habitable floor, and that can make a large difference also in the, the distance above or below of the base flood elevation you are.
Okay. Irma?
How long is this whole process? And I'll tell you what my real question is. What happens to the people in Hingham today that were so severely affected while this process makes its way through the governmental channels? And are they still going to have to pay X number of years of heightened flood insurance?
We're hoping that they have the 90 days, and then FEMA has, you know, may come back to us at that point and request some additional information, which likely they'll give us like a 30-day turnaround time. They can request another 90 days, it is in the legislation. I don't know if FEMA has done that, and may it just be continuing, you know, some additional back and forth on 30 days. It's, it's hard to say, but the goal is, and what we tried to push for is to get this rolling so that we can beat the October 1st deadline if the, you know, the law isn't changed currently.
Because there's a piece in one of the pieces of legislation which if individual homeowners file and win, and if they use their own money, they'll get reimbursed. And I, it's very confusing to follow.
It's in the legislation, but we don't know whether it'll be in the plan bill right now.
Correct. Yeah. Because it's stuck. Okay.
So the intention I have is that, was to give you this, you have the presentation tonight, give you a week to digest it and be ready for a March 1st filing deadline. That would give us two 90-day periods before October 1st, plus an extra month of wiggle. That's about as best we can do right now.
Is there anything we could do at town meeting? Let's say FEMA actually cooperates. I'm always optimistic. But let's say FEMA cooperates. Is there, and they turn around and the maps are more what we want than not?
We could accept it at a town meeting, but it's unlikely. If we get it in from March 1st, you know, even if we wanted to do a supplement, they'd have to get back to us by the end of April for us to move through enough posting to do something like that. You'd have to open the warrant up.
Yeah.
So I would say it's unlikely you'll do anything at this town meeting, but as Peter mentioned, and I know I've talked to Abby about this before, if FEMA changes the flood maps, our acceptance of it becomes a little bit more of a formality than, I think, a legal requirement. The banks and the, you know, the folks that are, the people that are using the flood maps that are impacting our residents that started this process, you know, those folks will be using the revised flood maps, right off the bat, I would suspect.
We hope.
Paul?
Yep.
Well, thank you for your presentation and the information. I'm curious as to whether any of the existing infrastructure with respect to outfalls is at risk by any of the water levels that you were able to discern. Town Brook, the gates going into Homehouse Marsh, things of that nature.
I think a lot of those, some of those areas are submerged, but I think what you're seeing, when we did our analyses, the wave heights ran from four to seven feet by the consultant and ours range, more in the two to three feet. So we're seeing that actually, you know, wave action and stuff that's really going to do damage is probably much less of a threat. I'm not that familiar with the structures to say, you know, how they'd be impacted.
Well, just for purposes of conceptualizing, I mean, is the present wave or water level higher than it was 10 years ago, 20 years ago, from the data that you looked at? Are you able to illustrate that for the viewing public?
We looked at, we looked at the, the annual, just to get the historic, to do a, you know, statistical analysis, there are a lot of studies out here, out there that are suggesting that sea level is rising, and that certainly you can say that, you know, it is coming up. I don't know the exact number from 10 years ago, and it probably will continue for foreseeable, you know, future.
Okay.
Great job. Thank you.
Any questions from the public?
I don't have to make a comment.
Please, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you for coming out on a really ugly night.
Otto Harling, 212 Otis Street. I've looked over Peter Williams' analysis and what is put together for LOMR, and so has my neighbor who is also an engineer, Bill Carnes. And we think he did a good job. We hope that he's as good a lawyer in fighting with FEMA to get this accepted as he is an engineer. In, in just this area, Walton Cove, I represent 53 homeowners there. Forty-six or 47 of them have been taken out of the flood zone entirely. They should never have been mapped in. Because they did a ridiculous thing. They went from a V-zone of 14 feet and an A-zone of 12 feet or so to a V-zone of 22 feet. Junk science. And of course, Peter picked this up, and we knew it was wrong, but he did it the way a professional has to do it to be accepted. I'd like to thank the leadership of the town for helping out the citizens, not just those who are directly impacted, but to the tax base, eventually all of citizens of the town. I appreciate it very much, and I know the people in the Walton Cove Coalition appreciate it too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's very kind of you.
Otto, thank you very much for your help.
You lit the fire, and we couldn't cook the meat until you lit the fire, so, and I'd like to, Ted took the bull by the horn on this one and got it organized with Abby to see what we see tonight. Of course, the true answer is when we get the final answer from, I want you to know that I was interviewed on WATD this morning, and they brought this up again. There are obviously a lot of curiosity with neighboring towns on this subject, so, you know, they were rattling off the number of politicians who have hooked their stars to this issue, and that's good because that's how change, change begins to happen. So Otto, I thank you. I thank you for that. So the next steps are, will, next week, will?
Correct. You have the documents. I'll be talking more with Abby about it this week and with Peter. We're meeting with one of our councils to review how we want to approach the FEMA process. We know their process, but we want to still take a look at it from our perspective to make sure that, you know, we're not missing anything. Typical due diligence that we have here. And we expect to have you, if we need a formal vote, we'll have it for you in your agenda at your next meeting, but hopefully we'll have it for you to sign, and off we go.
Okay.
So, in addition to, you know, Otto, he didn't just start the fire. He really did help work with us collaboratively, along with his neighbor, Bill, through this process. Certainly helped bring up my knowledge of the area, and I thank him very much publicly, but I really want to thank Abby. Abby Pierceall really took the, this project and ran with it in its entirety, and I want to make sure she gets that recognition.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you all. Thank you. Okay. Everybody still okay?
Sure.
All right. Go back to warrant articles. We've got some toughies coming up. These are the articles we should have voted last Thursday.
It's the good ones.
The big ones. Let me get my vote map here. Keep moving that vote map.
Could I explain what Hannah Lincoln Whiting is for the folks at home that hear us do this every year?
It's a wonder, when you read the details, it's a, somebody did something in 1915.
15.
And we're still reaping the benefits of it.
And it traditionally is the first warrant article. Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund was established in 1915 pursuant to the will of Ada B.W. Bacon, and these are, these are words in her will, "To lend a helping hand to those in need in the South District of the town." That's South Hingham. For those of you that don't know, there is a South Hingham where, like I live. It's a very closely guarded amount. The principal of this bequest is $15,000, which in 1915 was a significant amount of money. And today, it's certainly not as significant. They keep the principal, and whatever interest is earned is what's given to someone, and only three people, and whoever cuts the check, knows who the person is that gets the money. It's pretty fascinating. Everybody that's on advisory, we all try to grab this article because it's so easy. But it's got a great history to it, and it's pretty neat that it's almost 100 years and we're still doing it.
It is. It's, when you read that detail, it is. And that's a legacy. Mr. Healy, any? You ready to go?
Yeah, I have no comment other than I think that the town does a great job in giving scholarship assistance to the students going on to college. This is just another example.
Okay. Would you make the motion on Article A, if you would?
Yeah. Where would I?
Backside of the page.
Okay. Thanks. I move that the town recommend Karen Sadlon, 33 South Pleasant Street, be elected, a member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund for a term of three years.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That Ted, in Article C, which deals with the reports of the various committees, we've gotten some of them, but not all of them. Okay? If we vote these, that ensures that we're going to get a report?
No. No, it just means that you're going to vote to accept all the reports that you get.
Okay.
Whether we like them or not. You know, if a committee doesn't submit a report, one of the technical things is that they can be disbanded at the committee, at the town meeting. We haven't actually used that in the past.
Well, that's why, there are some that I know are active, and I would hope that they would, and that this would be an incentive.
I know that Betty Tower usually, I'm pretty sure Betty Tower usually sends out a reminder to everybody.
She calls. She...
No, I know, but I also know...
Betty's relentless.
Yeah, but we need to come back to publicly recognize those that do.
Correct.
That's what we need to do. Okay. All right. Irma, you want to do Article C?
Sure. I move that the town recommends that the reports, if any, of the Affordable Housing Trust Audit Committee, Capital Outlay Committee, Commission on Disability Issues, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Country Club Management Committee, Council on Aging, Electronic Voting Study Committee, Energy Action Committee, GA All-Har Trustees, Harbor Development Committee, Hingham Historic Districts Commission, The Historian, Historical Commission, Board of Managers of Lincoln Apartments LLC, Long Range Waste Disposal and Recycling Committee, Memorial Bell Tower Committee, Open Space Acquisition Committee, Regional Refuge Disposal Planning Committee, Scholarship Fund Committee, 2006 School Building Committee, Wastewater Master Planning Committee, and Water Supply Committee be received, and that all of said committees, commissions, the council, and the historian be continue, except that the Regional Refuge Disposal Planning Committee be discharged with thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Article D deals with the report of the Personnel Board. Mr. Healy would...
I recommend that the town recommends that the report of the Personnel Board, copy of which is on file in the town clerk's office, be accepted, that the amendments of the Personnel Bylaw, including the Classification and Salary Plan, and any agreements reached by the Personnel Board in collective bargaining, which may be embodied or referred to in said report, be approved and adopted in their entirety, such approval and adoption to become effective July 1, 2014, or as otherwise specified in said report or agreements. That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $370,542 for the purpose of this vote, and that the town accountant is hereby authorized and instructed to allocate said sum to and among the several personal services and expense counts in such amounts respectively, as are proper and required to meet such amendments and to comply with such collective bargaining agreements as may be entered into by the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next article is, deals with the salaries of town officers. And let's see. Irma?
Article E, that the town recommends that, subject to the proviso below, the salary from July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, for each of the following officers shall be at the rates below stated or provided after the name of the office. Town clerk, and I'm going to read the footnote here. This footnote, town clerk, when serving as a member of the Board of Registars of Voters, shall be paid for such duties in accordance with Section 19G of Chapter 41 of the General Laws. So town clerk, in accordance with the compensation rates established in Grade 15 of the Town of Hingham's Classification and Salary Plan of the Personnel Bylaw. Selectmen, at the request of the Board of Selectmen, at the annual rate of $2,000 each, accept that the chair shall receive an annual rate of $2,500 for the period of incumbency. Assessors, at the annual rate of $1,800 each, except that the chair, for the period of incumbency, shall receive an annual rate of $2,000. Municipal Light Board, at the annual rate of $214 each, to be paid from the receipts of the Electric Light Department, provided that the salary of each such officer, except selectman, assessor, and municipal light board member, shall be reduced by all retirement allowances and pensions received by such officer from the Town of Hingham.
Do I have a second? I'll second then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Acceptance of easements, Article JJ.
Yep.
See, puts on the bottom of, very bottom.
I recommend, move that we recommend that the Board of Selectmen be authorized but not required to accept grants of easements for streets, water, drainage, sewer, and utility purposes, or any public purposes on terms and conditions the board deems in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And bill of a previous year. That is Article AA. Ted, do you have some information on this?
Actually, Betty's working on that, right?
Yes. This article deals with a bill from fiscal 13 that we were unaware of until well after the close of the fiscal year. The bill was misdirected, and under state law, we cannot pay a bill of a previous fiscal year without a vote of town meeting. So Tetra Tech Rizzo has done some work for us over at the property over at 101 Hershey Street and back of 101 Hershey Street, and we did not receive the bill in time to pay it during fiscal 13.
The documentation we got said March 28, 2013, but...
That was when the bill was sent, but we did, we did not become aware of it until we got a, done a notice in, say, October, December, October, November this year.
Okay. Okay. Say, Irma?
Hey, you make a motion? Nope. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to recommend that the town appropriate the sum of $10,898.69 for payment of an invoice from a previous fiscal year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the last warrant article thing has to do with receipt of the Hingham Light Plant, the dispersment. This is, this is at the same rate as in previous years? Am I correct? Okay. Mr. Healy, would you be so kind?
Sure. I move to recommend that, with the exception of $500,000, which is hereby transferred to the general fund to reduce the tax rate, all funds received by the municipal lighting plant during the fiscal... plant during the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2014, be appropriated to said municipal lighting plant, the same to be expended by the manager of the municipal lighting, under the control and direction of the municipal light board for the expenses of the plant or said fiscal year, as defined in Sections 57 and 57A of Chapter 164 of the Mass General Laws, and if there should be any unexpended balance thereof at the end of said fiscal year, such amount as is deemed necessary shall be transferred to the construction fund, said plant, and appropriated and used for such additions thereto, as may be authorized by the municipal light board during the next fiscal year.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Betty, is there anything on Thursday night's agenda in terms of articles that we can dispense with, or I know there are some hearings on some issues?
I believe most of the articles have people coming on Thursday night to.
Okay. That's fine. Okay. Okay. I think we have some other votes that we haven't done, just in case you retired of We have a one-day wine and malt beverage liquor on the front page, Irma, if you see that.
Okay. I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Jay Tolman on behalf of Congregation Shere Shalom for the Purim Masquerade Ball to be held at the Congregation Shere Shalom, 1112 Main Street on Saturday, March 22, 2014, from 7:00 P.M. to 11:00 P.M.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ted, for the benefit of the public, we're going to vote an operating budget amendment from the library.
Correct.
All right. Maybe just a little background?
Yes, I met with the library director, Dennis Corcoran, and a member of their board, Edward Boylan, and the purpose of the meeting, they wanted to bring to my attention and need for them to have some professional development and training for some of their new personnel. As you know, they're hiring an assistant library director and so rather than a formal education policy, I indicated to them that it would be easiest to do it through professional development, most of the significant, most department budgets have some level of professional development for their managers to keep up with industry standards and it would be entirely appropriate that way, so I recommended this.
Okay. Any questions?
They have no professional development in their budget right now.
No, I know. This came up at a library trustees meeting and it's, it's good, it's good that they do that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Okay. Paul?
Sure. I move to amend the library operating budget by increasing, increasing the expense account by $4,000 for a total line expense of $282,382 and a total budget line of $1,508,262.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ted, the, this Vision Government Solutions issue, this puts to rest the, this is part of the assessors.
The reason I'm asking you to sign this is that it is in extent, in excess of my limit of $50,000.
Okay.
But this is a contract pursuant to a bid and Vision is going to be doing and managing the valuation for the town for the next three years at a price of, I believe it's 64 in the first year and 7,500 in the second and third year. So this doesn't, this indirectly affects the budget. I have spoken with advisory, I haven't yet spoken with all of you, I know I've mentioned it to Ms. Lauder's, who liaisons with the assessors, but we, I will be recommending to you the assessors' budget as presented originally because some of the costs are a little higher than expected in the, in the bid.
Okay.
And I communicated that with the advisory chair, advisory liaison, who will be doing the same.
Okay. Okay. Irma?
I move we sign an agreement between the Town of Hingham and Vision Government Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $79,000 to develop and implement of F Y 2015 Valuation Update Program for taxable and exempt real property.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we are not meeting tomorrow night. I stand corrected. We will meet Thursday and did we agree that 6 o'clock was a good starting time Thursday or not?
I had you posted for 7 o'clock on Thursday. I didn't realize you.
Okay. So we're at 7 o'clock?
We're at 7.
7 o'clock. All right. So it's 7 o'clock on Thursday. All right. And I will, therefore, since we got through tonight's work, you can all go home and go to bed and I'm having a motion to adjourn.
Town administrative reports and selectman reports, I think you had a few things. I know I have one thing I wanted to share with you before.
And I got a couple.
But you want to hear this. I know you want to hear this. I do, I do know. I put it in your packet as an advance notice.
All right. Go ahead. All right. You're on my time now, Mr..
I'll be quick. I know you'll enjoy this.
And I have a couple, thanks.
We, the Town of Hingham was notified by Standard and Poor's that its bond rating of AAA rating was reaffirmed and I gave you a copy. You should see it in your package. There's a variety of great points in here, but one point I would point out, which, you know why it was in last week's package, but I will give you my copy before you, actually, you know what? I have a second, an extra one. But you will notice on one of the bullets, and I know that you are included in this and so you should take pride as I do, but I know that, I've shared this with our, our department heads and they take pride, but one of their bullets that they use to tall out our rating is, "We view the town's management conditions as strong with good policies that exist in most key areas." And I think that that's, you know, key, that they're once again recognizing the town's management. You are at the top of the town's management, so certainly another, another great, third-party validation of the work that you've been doing here for the last few years.
And I see, it just jumped off the page at me, that they complimented us on our OPEB contributions as well.
That will be a consistent compliment from all the rating agencies because they're identifying that as one of their key points. I told you five years ago when we got into OPEB, you know, everyone, you know, was thinking that this would be something down the road, down the road, down the road. Well, we're down the road now and they're expecting every community to deal with it and very few are.
That's, that's excellent. Well, it was worth staying for. It's good. Okay, thank you. Irma?
Just have a couple of things. There is a new draft, which is not so new, this is kind of collected over the meetings we lost out to snowstorms. There is a new draft of the noise bylaw on the town website, but it's under the Selectmen's tab. This time, it's not on the main page. So if everybody who wants to have a say, will go take a look at it and send your comments to Betty Foley, her email is there, it's foleyb@hingham-ma.gov, and the Selectmen's email so that we all get it. So now's the time to speak. Also, this is old news now, but it's worth saying, I want to congratulate, we want to congratulate Andrew Bowles on setting the state indoor 300-meter record. I think it's like three or four Sundays ago, that's quite, it's an unbelievable accomplishment, so congratulations to him. And I also, there was the blizzard that everybody knows on Saturday. So while we were all very snug in our houses, there was a particularly nasty, nasty house fire on Tower Brook Road and my heart goes out to the people in the house. But our fire department and in, in fact, I should have, while the chief was here, Chief Duff and Captain Powers were in command there and they did an amazing job. Hull and Waymoth covered our stations and thanks to the police department for blocking off all of Tower Road. And no, I did not go out. I wanted to, but somebody in our household has a heck of a lot more common sense. I know, no, he wouldn't go. Otherwise, I would have been there.
I'd tell him.
You have to understand. He was like, no, we're not going. They don't need your help, but I would have been there.
Well, I know. Well, you followed good leadership.
Through the spirit.
Because.
You know?
I was there on the phone for about an hour and a half, back and forth with getting the blow-by-blow.
It was, it was quite the thing on the scanner and definitely compliments to Captain Powers and Chief Duff.
Good point.
One last thing, I want to thank everybody who came out to our four-day book sale for the, at the library and encourage people to please give us your gently-used books. We raised over four days, a little bit better than $1,500 and all of that money goes directly to the library.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, he did. I can, Paul parted with some money.
Tip me off.
Mr. Healy, anything?
Yeah, I got a couple things. I want to give hats off to our veteran service officer. I just put down a little flyer that I hope the guy operating the camera picks up, but in the event that he's sleeping through this. It's a, it's a program put on through the Veteran Service Office in the University of Massachusetts to assist veterans in obtaining their GED. And that may seem like a somewhat remote issue here, but in my world, I see a lot of people that do drop out of school and getting the GED is something that is, is really a forward step to making life better. So I want to thank Keith for that. I also want to let the public know, for those that tune into the email alerts that the police department puts out, this week, the police and fire jointly are conducting an exercise up at the middle school to deal with the unpleasant possibility that if there were ever something to happen in one of our schools, that the men and women would know what to do. You know, as, as a kid who went to that school and as a parent who saw their children go through the classes there, standing there and observing in an observational capacity as a selectman, that was pretty intense, I have to say, because, without going into the details, because I don't think that would be appropriate, it was nonetheless very real, very scary and, you know, the, the blood pressure was up. You know, I talked to my son over email, who does a lot of that kind of training in, in his work as a soldier and, you know, that, that's about as real as it gets and in particular, I thought Officer Kilroy did a spectacular job, very squared away. I mean, if there's ever a problem, I hope he's working. I went down the square Saturday and with various members of different town boards, Historic Districts, Planning Board, CPC, took a tour of the Lincoln Building. I believe they're acting on something tonight, so I'm not going to comment further, but suffice to say, it was an eye-opening experience. That is a very important piece of the square and, you know, I hope that whatever happens there, it can somehow retain, it's an important place that it has. Right now, it's, it's an eyesore in large part, but there's a lot of history in that building, so good luck to those boards working through those issues.
Thank you. That's well said on that building. Number of people have talked to me about the, the meeting coming up and we'll trust in the good management of the folks involved. To, to the DPW, again, our thanks, get up in the morning and the roads are done.
They were perfect at 7 o'clock Sunday morning.
Saturday, had discussion with some of the folks. They've, they've stayed on top of this. We have, we order normally 2,100 tons of sand and salt. We've replaced, before this weekend, we replaced more than half of that. So the pressure, not only to make sure the material is there to keep the road clean and, and our folks respond admirably to that, but that is a reflection of the winter that, that we've had. So bear with us. I understand the next storm is rain, but I don't believe anybody anymore, so don't. I'd like to thank the Board of Health publicly for correcting an unfortunate situation with a, that affected the parishioners at St. Paul's and today, I'm happy to report that, that it has been revised and the issue is back, so I'm happy for that. And last and most importantly, there's a man in town who teaches at Boston Law School and I found out a couple of weeks ago when we were all at an event, that he has taught a couple of committee members. One is Scott Ford and the other committee member is our town moderator, Mike Puzzo, and that man who has served this town in many, many different ways, gave a wonderful recount of Lincoln's Gettysburg Address and corrected some misconceptions in history in a very nice and humorous way. So I'd like to thank publicly Tom Carey. For those of you who missed it, you missed a very stirring event and I thank Tom for the work that he put into that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night. Thanks.